Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, October 15, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Okay. Albertson, absent. Bueller, Danforth.
Here.
Lalum, absent. Manti, absent. Robie?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Y? Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get started tonight, I would like to mention that since our last city council meeting, former city council member Russ Wilkins passed away. And I would like to take a moment of silence to remember him. He was a great councilman and a really great man, and he's dearly missed by many. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. On a little bit nicer note, today we had the 10,000th passenger board an airplane at the Watertown Regional Airport. So that makes today a very happy day, good day for all of us. So, moving on, the first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Oh, hold on, one of them. I will say, moved by Y and second by Robie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The second item is public comment, and this is the time set aside for anyone to come forward and talk about something not on the agenda. Don't see anybody that wants to do that, so move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion in second? Moved by Vilhauer, second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four is 2018 Street Improvement Projects Assessment Rule Resolution Number 18-42. I'll look for a motion in second for approval, and then I will open the public hearing. Is there a motion? Motion by Danforth, second by Bueller. Okay, this, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and let Colin describe this project.
Thank you, Mayor. This was an assessment project for the curb and gutter along Third, the north side of Third Avenue Southwest. This had many missing pieces of curb and gutter, and it was, we were redoing that road, so we asked the adjacent landowners if they would like to participate in an assessment to establish that curb line all the way along the north side. And it was passed, and that's where we are today. We did send out, and I contacted a couple just recently, landowners about a minor adjustment that we had to make. But I guess that's where we are today.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to talk about this? If so, come forward. See none, I will close the public hearing. Kristin?
I guess I'd, okay, sorry. I'll just say a little bit as a refresher on the special assessment process that we're at now. For item four, five, and six, those will, after this meeting, be turned over to the county so that they're aware of them. That then gives the opportunity from November 1st until the November 30th for these property owners to come and pay their assessment to the city. If after November 30th it hasn't been paid, that is the time when it's turned over to the county and will be put on the property taxes for 2019 for the 10 years, so.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Councilman Robie?
This is a resolution. Are there any, there's nothing to do with an ordinance change here. It's just stating the facts as they are.
Right. And this project is done, right?
This project is completed.
Yes. Councilman Vilhauer?
I've got a question in general. We spell out in the resolution, I think, in both four, or all three, four, five, and six, a 10% interest rate. I know we had someone appear before us a few months ago expressing some concerns, and we had talked about possibly a lower interest rate in that case. How does, how does an individual apply or come to us? Or what's the procedure if there is a request for a lower interest rate?
Sorry. That actually should have probably been done before this point because this is how it's posted for the notice of hearing is at the 10%. I did go back and do some searching, and we have only at one time ever done anything under the 10%. And that goes back to like 1997 is when I, there was one instance where it was lower. Otherwise, it's always been the 10% on our special assessments.
Anything else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number five is the 2018 Street Improvements Project Assessment Rule Resolution Number 18-43. And this is the 26th Street Southeast one, which was discussed briefly in the committee meeting. So I'll look for a motion in second for approval, and then I'll open the public hearing. Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Thorson. Okay, Colin, would you please review this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is to extend 26th Street Southeast to the north. We're still missing, missing a little section to the north of this. But this is an assessment project that was actually sent in motion by one of the landowners. They eventually bought the other side. So as you see, we only have two landowners, but three lots that are being assessed for this project. This is a new road construction, so that includes curb and gutter, asphalt, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water. This project is still under construction, so it's not complete.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? I'll open the public hearing for that. I don't see anyone, so I will close the public hearing. And we did discuss moving forward with this project, that there, we maybe shouldn't pave it this year, what we should do with the water services, and we'll be discussing that amongst the staff. But meanwhile, we can move forward with the assessment, and we would recommend that. The staff recommends that. So does the council have any questions before I take action? Councilman Danforth?
Mayor, if I can. We had a very good discussion about this in our Finance and Public Works meeting prior to now. And in my opinion, there just seems to be a lot of unanswered questions on this. And I would be hesitant to approve the assessment if we don't know truly what and when we're going to be doing something. Is there, what's the downside of not doing this assessment today? And doing it when we do know more of what the intentions are and the timing of those intentions, what's the downside?
Excuse me. My understanding of the downside would be that we would not be able to make the statutory deadline to get those assessments on the 2019 tax rule. And so my understanding would be that we would carry that cost until, till next year. So if you approve it today and we end up, now something changes substantially, for example, we decide not to do the road in some odd event, then there is procedure in statute that allows us to come back and amend the assessment rule. Then we would just inform the county to reduce the tax, tax assessment, and their 2020 tax would then go down from 2019.
So there is a process in the event that the detail that we are asking for, I think we should have, there is a process that if this gets put off, that either the landowner or the city can go back and say, we need to pull that back and do an adjustment then. As long as there is that process, then I'm fine with it.
And there has been costs expended already. So if the project stopped today, there would still be costs to be recouped. So I would think it'd be advisable to move forward on the assessment today.
All right. Councilman Vilhauer?
I got a question again procedurally. I mean, Colin, you said this is not, this is not done, but is the, the dollar amount that we've got in front of us, is that a good number? Or how do we deal with it if that is not the ultimate dollars that we're looking at?
Yes, and I'm going to actually refer this to Matt and/or Kristin. We did have a long discussion between the three of us on how to go about this one, because you'll see it on the next item that we discuss as well, that that project is not done as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Matt now. Well, we would come back and amend the assessment rule, but we couldn't get the true assessment rule on for the 2019 tax rule. So in 2020, those taxes would be adjusted some if we had to come back and adjust the assessment rule. The other option is too, if it's a de minimis amount, 500 bucks, the city could just eat the cost.
We have options. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is 2018 Sewer Improvement Projects Assessment Rule Resolution Number 18-44. And this is for the sanitary sewer project in 13th Avenue Southeast in RNZ Edition. So I'll look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Bueller, second by Danforth. And I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to talk about this? Don't see anyone, so I'll close the public hearing and ask Colin to explain it.
Thank you, Mayor. This project has been in front of us before as larger discussions, I guess. As you can see by the outline, and I don't know if my screen's up actually, but in your packets, you can see this project is not to extend into the roadway. It's all going to be done within the Boulevard area. And this is to update their sanitary sewer and the lift station in the area to city standards so we can then take this road over. And that's kind of where we're sitting to this. Project is also not complete, just for different circumstances with materials and equipment not being delivered at this time. I guess that's where we are.
Any questions or comments about this one? All right. And I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item seven is the special assessment role for weed cutting. And I'll look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Solom. And I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to talk about this? See no, and I will close the public hearing and ask Kristin to explain this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a little bit different than our, it's not really a special assessment. This is for the weed cutting that we do throughout the year. These individuals have had the opportunity, they receive bills from the finance office to come in and pay. If we make no contact and they haven't paid by this time, then this will be turned over immediately to the county. And they, at that point, will not have the opportunity to come in and pay at the finance office. So these are turned over immediately to the county. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristin. Councilman Danforth?
Every time this comes before this, this just eats me alive here. I'm going to ask a question, and I'm going to make a comment. Matt, what, Matt or Kristin, what do we have in regards to the ability to dictate what these costs are? Do we have full ability to do what those costs are and what we, we charge back? Is that dictated in some other manner?
I don't believe so. I think we've set that, I'm not sure if it's in our fee resolution or if, if it's just a department rate that Rob has set. I don't know if there's any other source that would dictate that cost to us.
And I don't know. I see these numbers, and I don't know if that's one cutting or 10 cuttings. I don't know that. But we are tolerating and we are enabling people to utilize the city as a supplier in this case. And I am struggling, I think, I'm sorry, but it's a, it's a pride issue, it's a responsibility issue. It's a, it's a using city resources that could be put someplace else to even deal with these things. And I believe that our, our fees that we charge need to be painful. Otherwise, if I'm an owner of a property and I'm someplace else and I get 50 bucks added here and there, maybe that's about what it costs me anyway. So why not just let the city deal with it? It needs to be painful. You know, I hear time and time and time again that there's things within our city that we need to be aware of, and we need to clean up our, our city as landowners and property owners. Every one of these becomes an eyesore, every one of them, because of the process that it takes to get it done. And what we're doing is we're, we're taking these people and we're charging them something which is the equivalent of putting them on a naughty chair. And I think it has to hurt. And I, I've said this before, and, and every time it comes up, every year, it's, it just really is a waste of, of the city's resources to even have to do this. And unless we make it very painful that somebody wants to accept the responsibility that they should have, we're going to continue doing this, and we're going to waste city resources. And that's my bandwagon. Sorry.
Okay. Well, that's, that's fine. And I think the street superintendent does explain the rates and ask for your blessing, if not direct approval every year. Kristin is, I don't know that this is in the fee schedule though, because it's not a service you can order.
No. I do think though, with the comments that were just made, I do think this would be an appropriate time in the next couple meetings if we want to have that discussion with it, because at this point, we won't be seen, this is kind of the cutoff point where we won't see any more of the weed cutting, and these will all be given now over to the county. So we kind of start with a clean slate. So I think it would be an appropriate, even if we want to discuss it in the next committee meeting and then bring it, you know, I can put that for the committee and then bring it forward for an actual council approval.
That's a good idea. And I'm sure that whoever does the services is, you know, wanting your guidance so that they don't have to be the heavy hand saying, this is how much I'm charging. So put that on the next agenda. All right, any other comments? And I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is ordinance number 18-21, amending Chapter 2.01 regarding allowable locations for special alcohol beverage licenses. And I'm going to ask for a motion in second for approval. And there is no public hearing, so we'll just move from there. So I have a motion from Bueller. Is there a second? Second from Thorson. Okay, Matt, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, thanks. Currently, our special event alcohol license ordinance requires that the applicant get a conditional use permit for the property that they're going to be utilizing that special event license, whereat they're going to be using that special event license. What that's caused for the city over the years is there's locations that have come forward that want to have special events, that the zone that they happen to be in does not allow for a bar tavern in that zone as a conditional use. We've done these things called temporary rezones and then conditional uses, and then they come forward for the special event permits just to get us to where we would like to be. And so what this will do is remove that requirement. It would still require those applicants to come forward and request that special event license. The council would still, one of the things that the council would look at is the location, so you'd still have the ability to deny an applicant based on a location if we feel, if the community feels it's not a proper location for, for an event. But that's the gist of what this ordinance would do.
Thank you. I think this is a much better way to handle it than the way we have been handling. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Would there still be opportunity for public input on those types of things then as the council is addressing it? So if there's public concern?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. Everyone, they have been going through kind of a convoluted process.
Yep. In fact, yeah, public input or public hearing is required unless the applicant currently owns a license and is applying for a special event at a publicly owned facility. So there's a kind of an exception in there, but.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item nine is approval of the 2018 update to the long-term equipment replacement schedule and capital projects plan. So look for a motion, second for approval. Moved by Vilhauer, second by Robie. Kristin, would you describe this for us? It looks different this year.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. The next three items, I'll just kind of touch on, they're kind of our final steps for our 2019 budget. This would be the long-term capital plan that we discussed the one night. Basically, the attached to the agenda and then the book that'll be going out once it's approved onto the website. This will be the long-term capital plan for the city of Watertown. A few of the changes were, that we did this year is we removed some of the smaller things, and we stuck kind of to that $50,000 limit so we could really grasp what the, the big capital items are in our, our projects that we want to kind of get in, into the plan for the city. So other than that, this is just the plan that we have. This is not, it's a little bit different than the budget. This plan does not tie us to anything. This is our plan, doesn't lock us in. If we change it next year, there's, there's nothing that that really affects, so.
Except that we should be budgeting for that.
That we should, yes.
Right. Any questions for Chris? Councilman Vilhauer?
Kristin, I assume I didn't go through and cross-match this with our first draft. This incorporates a change as then that we, that we acted upon here a couple months ago.
That is correct. Everything that came out of the public hearing for the capital, the long-term capital plan, is seen now in this book, so.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? All right then, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 10 is approval of the enterprise funds budget appropriations for 2019. I'll look for a motion in second. Moved by Councilman Danforth and second by Councilman Robie. This also looks a little different, so Kristin, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is just to kind of finalize the 2019 budgets. This establishes what came out of all the public hearings as far as the enterprise funds. So this covers our sewer, solid waste, and airport funds, stating our expected revenues and our anticipated expenses for 2019. Currently, I've brought this to you separate. Going forward in the next, the next time you see it come around, I think what I'm going to do so you don't see it separate, is I will just incorporate it into the ordinance, the big ordinance for the city. So you'll see that in the next year, so.
Right. And the reason this wasn't part of the ordinance is because it's not required by law to be part of the ordinance. It doesn't have to be in there. But this is a good thing to do, to spell it out. This is what was approved. So I like it. Thank you. This was Kristin's good idea. Anybody have any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristin. Item number 11 is capital outlay accumulations for 2019, Resolution Number 18-47. Look for a motion, second for approval. Moved by Danforth, second by Thorson. Kristin, you want to tell us about this?
Okay, this is the final one that kind of like I stated wraps up the 2019. The reason that you see this, the capital outlay accumulation, the resolution for this come kind of after is those dollar numbers are kind of based off of what comes out of our long-term capital plan. So this, the numbers that we are, by resolution setting aside for the capital, was shown on the ordinance for the 2019. We set aside money in the general fund, and we set aside money in the park and rec as well as the capital improvement fund. So this just basically says by resolution, we have assigned those dollars. And the way we do it is because we want a little bit of flexibility in that, we actually state in the resolution that we can change it each year based off of the movement of our capital, our long-term capital plan. So that's what this does.
Right. Thank you. Some communities actually pin it to a specific project, and if we did that, then we're, we're kind of stuck with that. So this gives us more flexibility. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 12 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Helms &amp; Associates for a passenger facility charge application. Look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Bueller, second by Vilhauer. And we have the airport manager, Todd Sire, here, and Mike Schmidt from Helms &amp; Associates to explain this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a passenger facility charge. This is a $4.50 tax that goes on to a ticket at the airport. So if you're flying outbound, there'll be an extra $4.50. And I believe it's 11 cents goes to the state, and the rest of it comes to the, to the airport as revenue. We can take this, the projects that we've done in the past that we've reimbursed the 5%, this essentially collects that money back for the city. So any projects we've done, the runways, taxiways, aprons, buying machinery, anything for the airport that we've spent the 5%, we get that back through this process. And this is also 100% eligible to start with. So we can pay for this upfront, and then essentially, it's 100% payback the first year.
One of the things we'll have to really focus on is you're obviously only in your second full calendar year of employments, and you're already seeing a, you know, upwards of 20 to 30% roughly of growth from last year. So we'll have to really work with the FAA, because what you do is you set out a dollar amount that you're looking to graphs from this program or a timeframe. So if you say you're going to have all these eligible projects over, say, five or six years, but you have substantial growth each year, you actually might collect that full dollar amount earlier, which then you'd have to go into another application. So we'll have to work diligently with the state and the FAA to set a good forecast for your, your future employments. And it's pretty awesome that you're seeing that type of growth, and you hit your 10,000th passenger today. So you got your million dollars of entitlements for 2020. So that's awesome.
Yeah, that is awesome. Thank you. Councilman Robie?
Can you give me some idea of what's, what generally happens, this compared to other airports?
Other airports, commercial airports do this. So, I'm sorry. We, we haven't put it into effect due to the fact that we only had 2,100 to 5,000 employments, or total passengers, I'm sorry. So cut that in half for employments. This is only employment-based, so it's only outbound passengers we charge this on. Pier charges it outbound, Aberdeen charges it outbound. So we're kind of the last one in South Dakota to actually charge this fee, but it didn't make sense in the past with the, the amount of employments we had. But now we're breaking 10,000 numerous years in a row. I think this would be a great revenue stream to pay back some of the debt we have.
So if your, your employments, you're looking anywhere, you know, if you're projecting out, this could be $55,000 to $57,000 a year coming back to the city. So it's, it's real money. Absolutely.
So, so this fee is collected at the federal level? Is that correct?
This is actually collected by the airlines and then remitted back to the city.
Correct.
So you'll see, yep, the airlines collect this fee. That's why they get an 11, or 11 cent. They keep, out of the $4.50, they keep 11 cents. So $4.39 comes to, to the city.
Okay. And then the, the fee for doing the application, is there an amount? I don't know if I'm missing a page.
Yes, you're missing a page.
Yeah, we did see that. Yeah, there was a page missing, yeah.
We noticed that. We visit with the, with the feds and the state, and roughly, they see anywhere from 20,000 to 35,000 is what it takes to go through this entire application process. Our rate is hourly rate, so if it's less, that's obviously what the cost is going to be. But to give you a really, really tight schedule of costs, it's something that, again, like Todd said, the city of Watertown has never applied for it. The, the city Aberdeen did years and years and years ago that we weren't involved with. So there's, there's a few unknowns out there, but, you know, with our invoicing, you're going to see every hour that's worked by every employee. So it won't exceed 35,000. Like Todd mentioned, this is 100% eligible. So, you know, if you look at your first year remittance on PFCs, that covers the cost for the application process, and then starts reimbursing you for. starts reimbursing you for previous city share costs on other projects, so.
Okay.
Is this a one-time application expense that we have, or is this?
It's not. So we put a, we put a program together. Uh, Helms and Associate, Helms and Associates will put a program together uh for X amount of years. So say we want to go back to nineteen eighty-five, we did a runway project then, and the city share was thirty-five thousand. So we'll put that project number one, or maybe the reimbursement number one. Number two would be a taxiway. Uh, however far we string it out, the first go-around would be essentially we pay that money back when we get our projects that we put the first go-around, that's it's about ten years is roughly what they want to see, five to ten years. And once you get those projects paid off before the deadline of actually getting paid back all of the money, we'll have to submit another application for the fee. And uh you could ask Mike about.
This will build the framework for future applications, i- if that's what you're kind of going with. So it's not something you'd have to see it be um this cost every time you make an application. So we're building the framework for the city, for Todd, for the airport to to uh um have it on file so when, once it comes time to submit another application. That's why I mentioned we have to work with the FAA on on forecasting your employments because you'll have an expiration date or an expiration dollar amount. If you hit the expiration date without collecting those dollars, you can usually, I think, file an extension on that same application, but if you hit the dollar amount, then you have to submit a new application with this, with another date. So if you hit the, if you hit the dollar amount first, that mean, that's good. That means you're beating all of your expectations as far as employments. Um, and and Aberdeen just in fact kind of went through that same process. They were, they were reaching their max of of funds before their expiration date. So this is going to build your framework for the city to use, whether it's it was us assisting or whether it's it's Todd and and his staff submitting the application in the future.
So this will be, when would you think, five to ten years till we have to do it again?
Yeah, that's usually the average. Like I said, it just depends on employment, so we're really going to want to work with with Todd, the state and the FAA to come up with a a good comfortable number of yearly employment, so we're we're accurate uh once we get out that timeframe, because yeah, we don't want to see it in two or three years.
Every other year.
Right, right. Now, if you do that every other, that means your employment's really, really grew.
True.
So that's always a good thing too, but uh, no, absolutely. You want to, that five to ten, you know, probably right around seven years is is kind of what they see.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen is approval to renew life insurance plan with MetLife. Look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Roby. Second by Y. And I will ask Kristin to explain this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is before you know, is the time where you start to see the renewals of different insurance. Um, this is to um renew with MetLife for our life insurance policy. Um, we offer this to our employees. Um, we, every employee is covered by the city for a certain amount, so this kind of locks that in. Um, they did show in the renewal to extend it to twenty twenty-one at the same rates that you see here. Um, so I guess I will let the council of whoever made the motion, if you want to extend it to not just be twenty nineteen, but extend to December thirty-first to twenty twenty-one. Um, the city currently pays a dollar thirty a month on an employee. So that's what we're paying for life insurance on an employee.
All right, Councilman Roby?
In the past, have we done three-year extensions or we always done it on an annual basis?
To be honest, I don't know if this one has ever really come before you. It's not a contract per se. I mean, it's what we offer to our employees. It doesn't, we don't have to, I suppose, pay it if we didn't want to, but it's it's a renewal. It's what we offer to the employees. It's the rates that they're given. Um, and it in our benefits package to our employees, we state what we cover and we cover the five thousand. So I think, I don't know if it's ever really come before because it's not truly a contract, but this is who we use for our life insurance.
So we can sort of lock it in?
Yeah, I think what we're doing is if if you guys see that this is a good system, they're saying that they will stick with these rates for an extra two years and not.
What's the chance those would go down?
I don't know. We've used MetLife for quite a while and to be honest, I think their rates have pretty much stayed this since I've been here for the same, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Vilhauer?
Let me make sure I understand what I'm looking at. The, is this the rate per thousand per month? Is that what we're looking at?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the coverage that the city um looks at is that basic life, so it's the twenty-two cents a month per employee. And then we also cover at the next page that the personal, um, I think that's accidental death and disability, that point oh four, we also cover that. So that's where um that's where our coverage is on our employees. And then the rest of the rates you would see is if any of the employees want to take out additional based off of their age, that's the rate. And it's per, I should say it's that rate at a thousand, and we cover five thousand for employees. So you take the twenty-two cents times five and then that's per month.
Councilman Roby?
What do you recommend?
I recommend we stick with this. I think um I would recommend the three, um, just because then it kind of lets people know. And like I said, it locks us into knowing that the rates are going to to be there if there would be a significant change in life insurance. But I'm also fine with doing the nineteen if, I mean, I have no problem doing this each year. I think it's it's just as easy. We we get the renewals from all of our other, you'll see our um health insurance will come up, so this is kind of the time, so I'm fine with just doing it for twenty nineteen and bringing it back each year along with our health insurance.
The letter is recommending three years, right?
Well, the letter just states that it's for the renewal for twenty nineteen with the option to extend it, so I am fine with us just renewing for nineteen. And then that way, if there is any changes we want to make in twenty twenty, we.
So the motion was for nineteen?
The motion was fine it, yep, twenty nineteen.
Councilman Danforth?
Um, Kristin, how much do we pay annually? What's out of our pockets for in total?
Okay, okay, if we had a full staff, two hundred and twenty employees, all year, it'd be around thirty-five hundred dollars total, so, yeah.
In total?
Yeah, because it's only, we only are paying a dollar thirty a month per employee. There's two hundred and twenty employees, so times twelve. Yeah, this isn't a large expense for us, um, but it does, it is a benefit to the employees. They do have the opportunity to get um additional coverage through MetLife.
Hardly ever gets used. That's why it's so cheap, right?
Yeah. The the biggest reason why it's, you know, it is used quite a bit, I think, by our employees. The thing is, is the reason these rates are so low is our office. The finance office actually does this. We keep track of it. We keep track of the changes. We keep track of making the payments. We are kind of the administrator. Um, so that's why some of these rates are fairly low compared to some other life insurance policies.
By used, I meant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
People aren't dying on a regular basis.
Yes.
I was okay, I knew what you meant. All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. This was for one year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item fourteen is the first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-two, amending chapter seven point one nine regarding the Home Rule Charter Revision Commission. And there's no action required on the first reading. Um, but I'll let Matt talk about it a little bit and um point out that I, um, each council member will be nominating two members to serve on that committee. They can't be an elected official, I understand. Um, they have to live in the ward of the council person that is nominating them, I think. They have to be a city registered voter. And um, Matt, you want to take it from there?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thanks. Uh, as I recall, we, this was a, from a discussion we had at the last committee meeting. Uh, the, not tonight, the previous uh week's committee meeting regarding our ordinance on the Home Rule Charter Revision Commission and uh if we need to change anything before we embark on this next, this next year's revision commission. Um, what we took out of that discussion was that the only thing that we would propose to change at this time is that uh we want to make sure that the commission's report can be to us in time to get on the June general election, the municipal general election ballot. And so the proposals you'll see there are just changing the dates, the three dates that the the ordinance spells out uh from February to December. December, the first meeting in December will be the time at which each council member will have to come up with their two recommendations for the commission. The uh first report of the commission will be due in March and the final report will be due in April. And then that would allow, like I said, that would allow that uh any revisions that the commission were to suggest to get on the ballot for June.
Okay, thank you. And so each council person needs to um present their nominations at the first December meeting and and I will present one. So we'll have a total of twenty-one members. Is that voted on by the council? Like, can they, why don't like your nominee, kick off somebody?
It's not my understanding. You teach, teach council persons prerogative to pick two, two members.
Right. Right. Councilman Vilhauer?
Mayor, Matt, I know it's only a first reading, but I took the liberty of inviting uh Jim Roby uh to the meeting tonight. Uh, I thought we might have a few questions. I know I've got a couple for him. Jim chaired the uh the last go-around of this committee back in twenty fourteen. So Jim, do you want to, do you want to step up and like I said, I've got a couple of questions and might have a few others from the 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 group up here. Um, first of all, tha- thanks for taking time out to come come down here tonight, Jim. Um, I guess the the question that we kicked around at the last meeting and were discussing like a foregone conclusion, uh and that's a number of of members on the committee, first of all. Um, there was talk that, you know, twenty-one is maybe an unwieldy number to work with. You and I visited on the phone and I relayed your, the gist of your conversation at our last meeting that you thought it was okay, but yeah, I guess I'd like to have you talk to address the uh a little bit of your perspective or history with the number of of bodies on that committee.
My initial impression was, and first of all, thanks for asking me to appear in front of you. It's good to be here not asking for something. But my my initial impression was that I thought that was an awfully large committee, but I I think, and I I think Brad will agree with me. Brad also served on the commission. Um, that once we got rolling, it did not prove any problem. Um, I would, my gut feeling is if we got any larger than that, it probably would, but with the quorum we had, which I believe is eleven, uh, you know, and a few people would miss a meeting, but it it worked out okay and everybody got down to business right away. The the time requirements are fairly short, relatively speaking, but I I thought the, again, my initial reaction was twenty-one's a lot for a committee, but I thought it worked out okay.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Another question, Jim. Uh, the ordinance calls for at least or or shall not meet less than four times and we're pro, looks like we're we're probably compressing that time a little bit that the work, that the committee has to do their work. I- is that a a an unreasonable number of times to meet or, I mean, how how often did your group meet uh last time around?
I, uh, we met six times and I, did everyone receive a copy of the of the report we?
I I don't know as I shared that.
Okay. But uh, yeah, we we met on April twenty-four, April twenty-nine, May sixth, May twenty, May twenty-seven and June three, and then issued our report, is what we did. Um, and um, you know, i- if you if you're going to get into a a subject that's got a lot of meat on it, and I'll give you an example because it's mentioned in the report, there were some members that uh in some discussion in the community, should we consider having a uh city administrator type position? And and we concluded, there there was enough time to talk about that with with this setting. I think, you know, others could propose things like that later on, but we simply couldn't give that the attention. We did invite in um the former city administrator, city manager up in Aberdeen, now the mayor of Aberdeen. Bruce, I think you were at that meeting. Uh, yeah. No, your brother participated, but I thought you were at that one meeting where the mayor from, came down from Aberdeen. I know you were at one of the meetings or, yeah, and um and so, you know, that's that's an interesting topic, but we just, that's a big topic and we didn't have enough time to tackle something like that. So I think the purpose of this commission is to really look at, uh, you know, things, since the, you know, in the prior five years that have gone by, what have we learned that maybe needs to be addressed and and uh they're certainly important, but they're going to be more nuts and bolts about how something's worded and things like that.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Another question, Jim. Um, you and I again visited about this uh privately with the phone, probably two, three months ago, actually. We we had talked as a group here and in fact, at the last meeting, uh, Mayor, I think you you were going to put together a little subcommittee of council members uh to do some homework ahead of time uh that we would then come up with some recommendations to then hand off to your committee. I mean, i- is is that a helpful process, having those of us that that are, you know, probably closest to the action, uh, giving some recommendations uh to you, to the the group? Would that have been helpful uh when you chaired the the group?
I think if the council has certain concerns, that would be helpful. Um, but you know, the nature of a home rule charter is uh the the, a community having adopted that is allowed to do anything that's not prohibited in the law essentially, and so on um i- if you think there are some things that are unwieldy about the charter itself, uh, you know, yeah, your input, although I would, I would assume that the commission uh would always take input from the city if you wanted certain things looked at. I think that's an appropriate purpose for that. When we did this in twenty fourteen, I don't recall that we, Brad, you might have, I don't recall we had any specific directive from the city council to look at any particular issues at that time. And if you look at the report, we ended up saying we don't have any recommendations for change. We thought there are a few things that could be tuned up, but it probably didn't justify city election.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Councilman Danforth?
I'm going back to that and it didn't seem right to me then, and it's kind of where Glenn is leading to now in some of the discussions that we've had as a council and with the mayor. But at the the first go-round on the the Home Rule Charter Review, um, and I can speak for myself, I I was asked to to identify two individuals that would sit on that and it was, I'm I'm going to use the word dictated, that we not participate. That it needed to be purely a public uh review. And to me, that is very contrary to what, the way it should work. We can't dictate, but we certainly need to be a part of the process because these people and these council members and the mayor, we're we're in that trench. We know what some of our issues that we deal with. And we know that we can't dictate anything, but we certainly should be bringing to light issues that we see and possible solutions. And that, I think, is what our objective is now, is to look at some of these things ahead of time because you don't have a lot of time. And and to present, here's our thoughts, what we feel the issues are, here's what we think some of the solution possibilities are, go at it. And i- in that manner, I would hope that's beneficial to that that committee.
I wasn't aware that um that command had come down on high like that. Um, I think that in the meetings, my recollection is that uh a couple of council members stopped by um and my recollection is is when we invited in the speaker, it was that Mike Levenson, uh, the mayor up in Aberdeen came in and talked. That was kind of an interesting meeting. Um, and I I would guess that, again, Brad, you might have a comment on this. I don't think our commission would have resisted input like that, but.
Would you have asked questions had they been there? Did that come up where you wondered?
You know, I think we felt free that if if we had questions about something, we were going to ask them. And for example, when we talked just generally about the subject of of a city manager type, city administrator type position, you know, we reached out to the city managers in a couple of towns and and then we invited some to see if they could come up and talk to us. So I think the commission felt it had that authority to do that. Um, I don't recall any particular issues. I don't recall any particular issues that we were aware of that deeply impacted the city, but I, if there were some, I would have been interested myself in wanting to probably hear from council members and we would have called them up, I think, and asked them to come.
Well, and we certainly wouldn't want the commission members to feel pressured in any way. If the presence of the council and the mayor is making someone feel like they can't freely communicate, that's, that's not a good sign about our community, but we, we don't want them to feel that way. We, we want them to feel welcome to ask questions. And if there's a good reason for the council mayor not to come, I would like to hear it and explore that, otherwise it seems like you'd want them there.
Yeah. I don't think anybody from the commission said that.
I'm not saying that. And I think the mayor hit it on the head. I, I, I don't, that was our first time round on that. And I, I am pretty confident that the, the intent of that, the fact that you didn't have anybody there probably tells me that there was that sense of, don't get involved or interfere with. And I think it becomes the intimidation factor. And I, you know, I, having sat on like, for example, the, the Board of Adjustments and the Plan Commission, when council members came, there was always that little bit of a intimidation factor that, that went along with that. And that's probably where that went with. But I think what we're doing this year, what we're planning to do some of the work, I think will be very beneficial and it's up to the committee to decide whether it's relevant or not. But I think you're going to get, you, whoever these people are, are going to get a good insight from those elected officials and, and probably some of that coming from staff as well, input as to what we see the issues are and why certain changes maybe do occur or don't occur. I would hope that's the case and I, I look forward to us putting that together for this committee, I really do. I think it'd be very beneficial.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Questions for Jim?
Actually not a question for Jim, I guess. I've got a question, not involved the last go around. When that report of the commission or the committee comes to us as a council, we don't take any kind of action. I mean, that, all we just do is receive it and then it goes, goes to a public vote, correct?
Yes, that's correct. If there's changes that are proposed, then it would go to the public vote.
Anything else? Well, the, the subcommittee is formed, so they'll be rolling sleeves up and getting to work right away. Thank you, Jim.
Good luck. Thank you.
Item number 15 is consideration of change order number two final for the miscellaneous storm and street improvements project number 1718 with J&amp;J Earthworks Inc. for an increase of $400, bringing the total contract amount to $182,036. And this received the recommendation of the council previously, but Colin, would you please just give a little refresher and then I'll get a motion second for approval?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This change order completes a project that actually started last year. They had one item to complete that is finally complete and we are in the process of closing that project out and this is part of that.
What was the one item for $400?
They had to install a head wall on this project and that kind of got pushed off due to what, late weather last year, also wet weather.
Yep.
And that's, there was a $400 increase.
Okay. I'll look for a motion second for approval.
Solomon?
Moved by Solomon, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 16 is consideration of change order number five final for the sanitary sewer improvements project number 1808 with Dunick Inc. for an increase of $3,416, bringing the total contract amount to $523,625.41. And this received the recommendation of the committee prior. I'll, I'll look for a motion and a second for approval. Moved by Y. Second by Thorson, any, well, Colin.
Thank you again, Mayor. This, this completes, or this will be the final change order and this has been substantially complete for our sanitary sewer improvements project for this year. We did run into a lot of issues. This takes into account those added costs, which ended up being a lot and to offset those costs a little bit, we did remove a portion of the project, an overlay of two streets that will be done in the near future, coming up. But that was to save on costs this year. So it ended up with a final increase of, you know, this small $3,400. And we're pretty satisfied with how little we had to increase it based on the amount of work that was done.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 17 is authorization for the mayor to sign the amendment to the Prairie View Edition Development Agreement. I'll look for a motion and a second for approval.
Moved by Villaher.
Second by Bueller. And this received the blessing of the committee meeting prior, but Matt, would you please just review what's being proposed?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. This is an addendum to a 2013 development agreement between the City of Watertown and Midwest Business Condos for the development of Prairie View Edition in Northeast Watertown. This does basically two substantive things to the original development agreement. First, it basically will reflect the, the payment the city has already made for sanitary sewer services in Cherry Drive, 27th Street East and 14th Avenue North. And the second substantive change that we'll make to the original agreement will, basically it'll bind the city to make reimbursement to the developer for one-third of the cost for installation of storm sewer in Cherry Drive.
Thank you. So are there any questions? See, none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 18 is old business and we have the update on the airport terminal grant application here. So we have Mitch from Meeden Hunt and, sorry Mitch, can't remember your last name. Todd will tell us maybe what you're hooking up.
I am Mitchell Walker with Meeden Hunt.
Oh, okay, thank you.
First off, thank you, thank you to the council, thank you to the mayor for letting me speak this evening. I wanted to give an update on where we are at in the terminal concept budget report and moving forward for a potential terminal design in the near future. First off, I just wanted to highlight this and planment numbers came out from the FAA just earlier this month. And as you can see, Watertown, the number I, I like to look at there is that, is that 427% increase year over year from 16 into 17. What we're seeing now, as Mike had referenced earlier, is probably about 10 to 20% increase overall. So just kudos to the work the airport's doing and to the city Watertown here. It's really exciting time. All right. Again, as an introduction, I'm Mitchell Walker with Meeden Hunt, doing some project management, design architect for, or out of our Minneapolis office. As a backstory, I was actually born in Watertown, so this is really exciting for me. Grew up in Madison, South Dakota, just an hour south. I had uncles who went to Lake Area and two of my cousins as well. So again, really exciting for me to be a part of this process and it's going to be wonderful. Our teaming partners are Helms and Associates who've been doing work out at the airport for, for years. I don't know, Mike, if you have the, the number offhand. And then Co-op Architects who also is a local architect here in Watertown as well. They have an office here downtown. I wanted to get into the process of what we are doing currently. Now, this is an ongoing process here. We are developing a concept budget report to be used for basically the initial phase of a design for a new terminal building for Watertown. As a part of that process, step one is seeking supplemental appropriations dollars. The federal government this year had, had put forth an additional $1 billion of supplemental appropriations into the airport improvement program. Applications for year 2019 are due at the end of October. And so what we are doing is trying to set ourselves up and set Watertown up to, to ask, to seek money associated with that supplemental appropriations and then complete the concept and budget report. And if we are, if we end up getting that, those dollars from the FAA, then we will parlay that right into design. If we are not so fortunate, then this concept budget report acts as a document that, that again, is the first step in terminal design, which Todd, you can speak to this, is that 2020?
2021 and 2022, we have it in the CIP already.
So this document, you know, the worst case scenario is, is we don't get this supplemental appropriations money, but you are, we are set up for design for 2021, 22 as well. And that first step is, is what is always going to be required from the federal, from the FAA. So, and please, this is a, I'd love this to be informal as it can be. So Mayor, if, if there are any questions from the commission or committee members, please, or the council members, please, just feel free to jump in. Just a quick, what I'm going to be talking about, our process and what's going to help us seek that application money, is we're going to, going to be looking at forecasting. That's a, a planment forecasting, commercial service and charter service. Then we will be looking at program allocation or space allocation. We'll basically identify what spaces will go into this terminal and then using standard metrics, you know, based on the FAA's advisory circles or, or circulars or IATA standards, that's international aviation, transportation, et cetera. All those acronyms speaks, we get, those act as, as standards in, in the practice. And then we will briefly discuss a couple of alternatives that we have, mostly as it relates to site location this evening. So we, we are tasked with doing two alternatives. One is site location, kind of adjacent to the existing terminal building and one is, is in a potential new location on the airfield, which has some definite advantages and, and some disadvantages, as you'll see. So moving on, I'll just kind of zoom through some of these, some of these quick slides. Right now, your distance to your hubs is Denver and MSP and then drive times to Fargo, Minneapolis and Sioux Falls. It's kind of where you're situated, right there. It's, it's a great spot. Now, Meeden Hunt has actually been doing the air service consulting for, for Watertown for the past few years. And we actually developed as a part of that, a catchment area. Right now, this is what we anticipate seeing as, as your guys' peak catchment and how, where the travelers will travel from to get to Watertown, to fly out to Denver or to, to I just wanted to make note of the amount and number of large businesses that are in Watertown and note that, that air travel is incredibly important to the business community. And now the current flight schedule as it stands today, right now, we have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday, flights with two, two round trip routes. And then on Wednesday and Saturday, there is one flight each one of those days. Now, what we've been talking about here as we get into the forecast is right now, there's always that stop in Pier. And so if, if we're looking at flights to Denver, you're actually competing with Pier's community as well for those seats on that aircraft. Right now though, as, as is shown by today's 10,000th planment, you know, Watertown has really taken advantage of this airline. It's wonderful. So our current forecast actually needs a little bit of amending right now, just based on, on how, how great the, the airport has been operating currently. But CPA has a commercial service passengers, SDSU has already some charter contract. In the, in the very recent history, there were some casino charters down to Laughlin and through Sun Country. And again, Todd can speak to this a little bit more, but we're hoping to work towards an interline agreement to connect CPA with United Airlines. And what that would allow you to do is, is for anyone in and around Watertown, be able to hop online and say, I want to go from Watertown to Seattle, as opposed to right now saying, I want to go from Watertown to Denver, Denver to Seattle. So as you can see right now, our planment totals, as I had mentioned before, were 11,160. Right now, this, this forecast is relatively flat and we see that kind of based on the existing routes that you guys have currently. Now, you're already probably blowing this, this forecast out because you're probably going to hit this 2022 number or even surpass it this year. So the incredible, the impressive growth that is Watertown is, that needs to be reflected in updated forecast. What we, what we're trying to reconcile is this, the FAA will not fund based on, well, this is what we think is going to happen. This is, they, they need some more hard data, some more routes. You can't just say, well, we're going to get this and it's going to happen and, you know, and go from there. Now, we can, we can back up these numbers with a potential interline agreement and, and that's where we feel like, or even the direct routes, where we're not competing with Pier anymore. And, and we could see these numbers increase significantly. So I know we are going to make a pass again at the forecasted numbers. These numbers won't necessarily affect what our program is, our space program. That space program is, is based on what's called a peak hour and planed passenger. So that is for your peak hour, for, it might be in the morning or, or in the afternoon, whichever flight I guess is, is going out, that is the peak hour of this airport. And we have to, as designers, design a terminal that, that works well within that peak hour timeframe. So that's a long way of saying, you know, the forecasted numbers, if that skews up a couple of thousand people, it actually probably won't affect your peak hour number, which is what we're taking our, our program from. Any questions on forecast before I move forward? Or Todd, did I miss anything? Please, all right, on a roll. All right. The, the next item I'd like to talk about is then our space programming. Right now, we are seeing significant need for space, for area in the post-secure area. Now, that's everything from the TSA checkpoint and beyond. Right now, we have, we have one lane that is really tight. You're dealing with some site, some constraints in the building that, that require you to actually screen passengers like in the, in the unisex toilet room, which is not ideal for anyone that needs additional screening. So we don't actually have a set area for that. That's one very basic item that we would obviously need to address. And then just the overall holdroom space, the space where the passengers congregate after the checkpoint is, is not adequate to, to serve what you guys have, even have currently on a busy day and what we would see in the future as well. Number of gates, what we would like to see is probably one boarding bridge out of this, one jetway, they're typically called, but a passenger boarding bridge would be, we would definitely want to have that capability and then possibly one ground boarding gate for large charters or one of these SDSU charters or a casino charter or anything like that. Restrooms need obvious expansion. And then the, the big item here would be concessions or vending. The airport doesn't currently have a airport restaurant and that's not uncommon, but what is incredibly unique about this is that you have probably over a thousand people right in that technology, or sorry, the industrial park, just basically on airport property. And if we, if we develop an airport restaurant, what that does is it gives Todd and the airport staff additional non-aeronautical revenue, which is, which is what we are, we're always trying to give them more ways to, to ma- trying to give them more ways to to make and and maintain then their airports. The next slide is is the pre-secure, it should say, pre-secure area. Again, just kind of overall, it needs to be beefed up a little bit, not necessarily as much as the post-secure. What we'd be looking at is currently, right now, there are no baggage claim devices. There are really no devices. It's it's all by muscle and a baggage slide, basically. So we'd like to alleviate the airport operators and TSA, make that easier on them. Waiting areas, public restrooms, all of these need to be addressed. The non-public areas are highlighted because they're not eligible for federal funding, but they they need to be a part of the project. So those are areas, when we get into actual design, we'll have those those meetings with those stakeholders, specifically to TSA, to to our airline partners and to potential rental car is something that we would be looking to add in the terminal building and obviously the concession air as well. Just the last item to note here, your current terminal facility, including admin, is at 10,000 square feet. We feel very comfortable in saying that you'd be justified probably all the way up to, probably up to the 28, 29,000 square foot area. Right now, we'd probably feel most comfortable just in that 20 to 25 region.
Councilman Villahora has a question.
Mitchell, how does that compare to to Pier Aberdeen as far as space, you know?
So Pier, I only know on on outline, unfortunately. It it appears about 17,5 in their footprint, 17,500 square feet in their footprint, but that is a two-story facility. Not all of that space in the second level is occupied. I know they have some two-story atrium spaces, but I would guess we would probably be in that 30,000, a shade over 30,000 potentially for for Pier. And Aberdeen, I'm not, I don't know offhand. Yeah, maybe Mike knows offhand. He's a flatwork guy.
I could speak a little bit to Aberdeen. I've been up there and toured the facility for this project, actually. And they do have two gates there in Aberdeen, with one being a jet, jet bridge and the other one being for charter, similar to where this this one's being set up. They are all on one level as well, so they're a little more spread out. I would say it's a a pretty identical match to Aberdeen is what we're looking at.
Any other questions on space? All right, I'll open this up then to alternatives where I know we'll have some discussion here. What we are seeing, we we had a meeting with the airport board this afternoon and what we had been tasked with, as I had mentioned, were two alternatives, basically site locations. One is to kind of rebuild adjacent to the current terminal. What that does for us is allows us to utilize the existing infrastructure, the parking, the sanitary sewer, water, electric, everything is all coming out to that terminal currently. So it would be pretty easy to kind of build in that general vicinity. The the downside of that current area is exactly, you know, what made it so advantageous to the restaurant is it is kind of nestled in that industrial park and it's actually kind of set between the FBO and and quite a few tea hangers. So go ahead, Todd, sorry.
FBO is the fixed base operator, the private sector.
I'll try not to use acronyms, I always do it. Basically, general aviation, your private pilots, your business pilots are all within that fixed base operator or the hangers associated with it on the other side. The entry drive then means that you're sharing that entry drive, which is two-lane traffic with, I've been behind, just recently coming out here, been behind a semi in there, going to the industrial park and then and then just traffic associated with which each one of those facilities. So ideally, it would be nice to to separate your commercial service passengers with your general aviation pilots and then your industrial park businesses as a whole. The FAA would like to see that. I know on the on the ALPs, they like to separate out and segregate that traffic. You know, and I can get into the cons then. What what that does is it means that you don't get the the use of all those existing infrastructures. You would actually be building new if we relocated that terminal building to substantially more costs associated with it. But budget numbers, these are very preliminary. Building would be plus or minus $8 million with Site Civil being about $1.5 million. That would include a bridge and some baggage equipment as well. Site option two, and I'll pull up a airport map so you guys can see this, but site option two would be built adjacent to taxi lane Bravo. Some of those pros are exactly what we've been discussing. It creates a designated entry, an apron for commercial service. Right now, what is happening is there's actually a box that that Todd and the airport staff have have actually painted on to designate which area in the current apron is for commercial service and what is for general aviation. It allows for greater expandability, but and this is the, probably the biggest con and we talked about the, we talked with the state after our airport board meeting to kind of let them know, these are the two ways we're going. We were actually mostly looking at if they would consider funding Site and Civil separate to the building so they would participate as a whole in the in the overall cost. And then we mentioned the, what is an EA, environmental assessment. Because we would be potentially proposing to build new, that that would likely, in all likelihood, require an environmental assessment, which that alone would take probably about a year to complete and then obviously would would jeopardize at least this year's opportunity for supplemental dollars. We wouldn't need that in the built adjacent to the existing terminal because it's already disturbed. It would probably go through what's called a categorical exclusion or catex and we see no issue with that being accepted. Questions on this? Again, budget numbers, we could see that that building adjacent to taxi lane Bravo probably coming in about double to what to what the other proposal would be. And here, I'm just going to kind of zoom in on on where we were talking about. So this is the ALP, this is the Airport Layout Plan. This is the current, current terminal building as it sits. What the green highlighted area that I've done here is is probably roughly about a 20, 25,000 square foot, just a block rectangle, sitting right on a portion of the terminal site. One item to note here, and it came up in discussion with with the airport board this afternoon, you know, if if we do look at this as the the preferred alternative and choose to go down this path of building adjacent to the terminal building, you know, it's pretty, we run into this problem a lot where we have shared aprons or or facilities coming in too close to one another. And I would say that the easier, the easier buildings to move would be the general aviation buildings as opposed to building new. This is the option, just as a, just as kind of a large oversized block on where we would potentially be looking at building an apron, additional taxi lane, entry drive, parking in the terminal building for building in a new location. And, you know, I can, I can understand absolutely why, why we would want to look at each option because they do represent, you know, really good pros and then each one of them has some drawbacks. There's, there's no, no doubt about it. Question, Commissioner?
Your previous slide showed about, I think it was eight and a half or nine for the, yeah, it was nine and a half and you got 16. What's the split on that?
The split for?
What, city pays, federal funds pay?
Sure. So the building, what we are going through this process right now with our program, the building would probably be 75 to 80% eligible overall. Now, that's eligible for federal funding. Then the state has their involvement currently capped at $200,000 for, for a terminal building as a, as it stands alone. And and so then the rest would be on the sponsor there in that particular instance. So doing the math, 80 of 8 and and then subtracted the state amount at 200,000. The Site Civil, however, would be fully eligible. Nearly all of the Site Civil would be eligible at 9010, sorry, 955, and the state would consider that separate to the overall piece, which would mean the state would pay potentially, sorry, state would pay 5% of the $8 million and and then the city would pay 5% of the $8 million as well.
Would they pay just 5% of the 1.5 on, if we stayed in the same site?
Yes, yeah, they would. Oh, sorry.
You said that wrong. The state would pay 1.5 or 5% of the 1.5. It would be 90% eligible, we'd pay 1.5%.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Then yes, yes. So so the state would pay 5% of the 1.5. It's a 955 state, so 90% fed, 5% state, 5% local. And so with any of the Site Civil costs, those would come in at 100% eligible or 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local.
It'd be the same as our other programs that we have, the 95 and 5. For the site work, the building would be the 70 to 85% eligible.
Yep, the building's kind of the the outlier here.
So the the only difference would be that it's a massively larger number that we'd pay 5% of on the civil work if we went to a completely new site.
That's correct.
I have a question, Mayor, if I might. The environmental assess, the assessment you talked about earlier, would that be eligible as well as the jet bridge for federal funds for those items? And just kind of what ballpark cost for a jet bridge in the in the environmental assessment if we did that?
So, go ahead, Todd, please.
We checked on the jet bridge price today, actually, and it was just, just over 800,000.
In planning numbers, you can basically assume about $1 million for a bridge. And an EA, I don't have those numbers offhand. Do you know what an EA would run, Mike?
It all depends on, on the project. If you're in a confined area or confined spot that you're really looking at versus a multi-passed, complex EA, it's, it's hard to say. But I guess something like EAs, sometimes it's a time.
It's the time.
It's a two-year process. It's a time limit.
I think you had mentioned it was a year.
One year minimum. I, I, you know, we see EAs that come two years as well, but, you know, the the point of that as well is that, again, if 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 somehow we don't end up getting the supplemental dollars and and we are kind of at the timeline of the CIP then, then you would have time to go through an EA and be ready to go at a new location in that 2021 timeframe. But the EA is eligible for federal funding as well. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question, a couple of them.
Councilman Downforth?
Well, a couple of things. We've, we've talked significant dollar differences between a new location versus staying in the same location. Does that help us or hurt us in an application to be one way or the other, as far as succeeding with that? That's one question. The fact that we're a essential air service airport, does that help us or hurt us in this, with the supplemental appropriations that are taking place? Because it seems like every X number of years, somebody out in Washington says, we got to get rid of it.
Right.
So that's one of my other questions. And then thirdly is, is, I got like nine things.
Yeah, no, please.
No, but the third thing is the, define for us a little bit what that environmental assessment really is. I mean, that it, I mean, what's really taking place when they do that? Are they like studying the effect on the birds? Are they, what are they doing?
Yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah, they would be doing wetland overviews, they would be doing hazardous sites. Our, I guess our initial concern was that that site was a previous military armory or base. And so soils would definitely be a concern if there was any lead contamination, contamination of soils, migratory patterns, wetlands is your biggest one, but migratory pa- patterns, tribal, I'm missing, I'm certain.
There's like 23 different categories.
Archaeological, yeah. So that just requires a lot of actually like sending out notifications and then waiting 30 days as well, or waiting, you know, 60 days for comment. And so, and then just doing the the testing as a whole. So that's the EA.
Yep. I'll, now the, is it, does it help us or not help us or no effect if we're a essential air service?
At this point, and I could let Todd speak to this a little bit, but, you know, EAS does not, does not absolutely disqualify you for seeking supplemental. It doesn't help or hurt you. Right now, priority airports are are looked at based on this micro or macro politen, macro, mic- micropoliten. And, but Watertown has, has been kind of singled out, I wouldn't necessarily say, but but definitely flagged by the state and by our program manager in Bismarck as being a, a really great opportunity to seek this funding. In fact, you know, Todd had told me that, that the day that this came out, they had called one another and said, you know, what airports are we thinking? And the first one they both said was Watertown to try to push this terminal.
My next and last question on that long list was the, if we go to the, the eight or nine million dollar solution versus the 16 or 18 million dollars, does that really have an effect? Do they look more favorably on the lesser number or do they look for the end result? And that's what their primary goal is?
We were looking at this today. Right now, I know that they would say no. I know that there is a project that that got funded at about $25 million just in the in the first wave of of grant funding and some other terminals actually sought about $11 million in funding as well. So, no, I don't think that that the the budget amount would disqualify you. I think what what would potentially hurt your chances for supplemental at this point would be asking for Site Two because of the environmental assessment. Now, what supplemental, the supplemental grant would ask you to do is start work immediately within six months. So we would be starting the design process right away and again, parlay that into construction probably next fall.
If we got awarded.
If if we were awarded.
This also, a piece that got brought up in the airport board was, we have a $4 million apron project that's going to happen this next year and the year after. Currently, we have it phased. That may get thrown into one project, depending on how this all shakes out. But one thing to note for Site Two, the airport board stated that if we don't do the $4 million currently where we're at, we could potentially use that $4 million to offset some costs for the new apron at a site other than where it's at currently.
Hey, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Another question. I hate to belabor this.
No, please.
Environmental assessment, but if they did, you know, if there was a, if they did uncover some bad soils, who knows, you know, burial ground, whatever it is, but would we, would the cost, would burden be on the city to take care of that or again, would the federal government be involved with that? I mean, because that could open up a can of worms, too. I don't know what the odds are of that happening, but it's something to consider.
In terms of hazardous mitigation, typically the FAA finds that ineligible and and the cost would be borne on local or state. What what the FAA would also do as a part of this process is ask for alternative sites and our alternative site would basically be site option number one.
So we may go through this whole thing a year or maybe two and they come back and say, build it on the right side of the terminal currently where it's at.
Just for, just if they did uncover, say they did have soils that had petroleum product, whatever in it, would we then, would it be incumbent upon us to make that right if they uncovered that in that process?
Yes. Yes.
So the application has to have a site chosen?
The application actually does not even have to have a site or an, an alternative chosen. Um, the site needs to have a dollar amount, a description, um, and a dollar amount and why you feel that this is, um, uh, justified. We would, we would wanna back up, and what we've done to this, to this standpoint has been trying to back up whatever number that comes out to. If it's, uh, and, and we would likely wanna shoot high on this regardless. Um, if it's the nine and a half million, we've already talked, we'd probably go ahead and ask for that ten to ten and a half million. Because, uh, truly this is a one-time deal. There's no amendments to a, uh, a supplemental grant. So if you run into unforeseen conditions or anything like that, then, then that would all be borne by the state or local as well. But, um, but in, in terms of selecting a site, no, that is not necessary at this point. Uh, I, I think it would be, what they may find fault in, uh, would be asking for the full, potentially sixteen to eighteen million dollars for option two when we know we have to have an EA done. And then, and then saying that we would then go back to option one with that. I, I, I think that may raise some flags. I think if we ask for the sixteen million dollars for option two, I, I, I think the environmental assessment is gonna, uh, flag us out of that one. And, and then the sixteen million dollars, I feel like would just be too much for, uh, what we would be proposing as justifiable space in site option one. I, I really wanna lay this out and, you know, give you guys the options here too. I mean, I, I want you to know that it's not off the table to choose option two, uh, if, uh, if we don't get the supplemental grant. Or if you don't, if you just wanna go after site two and, and don't wanna go after the supplemental grant for site one, I, I do feel that, that the timeframe of an EA requirement would, uh, preclude, uh, the FAA from giving us grant funds in this year for, for supplemental.
Councilman Danforth.
Doesn't it somewhat come down to what the cost benefit of going to the alternate site versus staying with the existing site and, and dealing with that? And if you're gonna double the cost of the project, basically.
Mm-hmm, yep.
There has to be a reason and a benefit to do that. That's very significant. So.
Well.
Is that analysis gonna take place that says, here's to, to you, City of Watertown, here's why, here's your justification for doing that?
Yeah.
And it's gotta be quality of service or it's gotta be something.
Right. Four dollars. The airport board, um, definitely, um, uh, stated this case as well as, is you all, e- even me, uh, will probably get one shot at this, right? And so if it's in the wrong spot currently, uh, then, then we have to live with it for the next fifty years. And so i- in that regard, that is your cost benefit to putting this thing in, away from, uh, uh, your industrial park, allowing expansion of that industrial park and expansion of the general aviation area in its current location and just completely isolating out the passenger service just for safety and security. Um, for overall costs, I can't say that, that isolating the passenger terminal will draw airlines or will, uh, give any more money to non-aeronautical revenue or, or any additional funds to the airport.
I think it would actually cut revenue, uh, due to the fact of the restaurant. I mean, if we move it, there's no sense in having a restaurant if we move it up to the northeast, uh, of the airport. So, uh, factors like that.
Does Aberdeen still have a restaurant in the, in their airport? It's been a while. They, they shut the, yeah, well, cause we had one in the eighties, I recall. I, yeah.
They went across the road in Aberdeen.
Would you mind showing that airport improvement plan again and show where the site for? And you'd show us which way is north?
So north is actually, um, north is actually right off of seventeen thirty-five, isn't it?
Yes.
So north is to the left on this, um, document. And you're coming in on highway twenty. Can you see my mouse actually? Okay, and, and this is the entrance into the existing airport road. Um, right now, this is all two-lane traffic, which, uh, regardless, we feel like we would wanna make that change if it stays or if it goes, um, creating a, a one-way roundabout in here as a, as right now at this location. Having, having two-lane traffic going to one single road of two-lane traffic seems, uh, um, a little bit, a little bit dangerous. So this is the current location. Um, future expandability would probably be expanded, um, to the east and taking over FBO area. The current, or the, the proposed site alternative two would probably create a new, uh, cut to highway twenty. Um, we would, we would likely need to bypass, there's a, uh, thing called a runway protection, protection zone where we basically can't build anything, um, right off the end of the runway. So we'd likely need to cut this or, or, or even, even use that same entry, uh, uh, vehicular entrance and then, uh, come off to the side, um, to that, uh, existing chain link fence, uh, perimeter fence, and then around into the terminal area and out, uh, creating a loop road.
Okay, so that other green rectangle.
Sorry, these were things that we were talking about, um, just, uh, we feel like going anywhere outside, uh, east of, of seventeen thirty-five was going to be, uh, too close to the community one for all that additional traffic and would add, uh, actually even more costs than we're proposing in, uh, uh, in this site option two.
Yeah, cause there's no roads out there that are worthy.
Yeah, and then it, it actually would probably deal more with, y- y- you would need to create a full-length, uh, taxi lane, parallel taxi lane to the, uh, runway as well, which would be a, a sizable project.
And that would also give us longer-term costs that we have to deal with in maintaining that.
Yeah, that's true.
I would, I would ask that you not use the term roundabout in the future. It's kinda been a sore subject at times, but no, I'm just joking, but, um, how would, if we stayed with the same.
The Mike Danforth roundabout.
I know, let's not do that one, but not unless I'm buried in the middle. But, uh, if we were to build on the current site, how, how would you envision that? Does the existing one stay and we have a structure that's built and then we tear it down? Or do you incorporate the existing one? How would that process work?
So that is, uh, being discussed currently. When we get, uh, when we get into the meat of the alternatives process, we'll, we'll, uh, definitely be looking at ways that we can either save potentially an area of the new part or, or, you know, build on, on the most recent, um, uh, airport manager's area or the administration area and then, uh, build further out to the east off of that. Um, uh, there are options to, you know, use a portion of the footprint and build out from that or, or ways that we would just build new off to the side, uh, adjacent to it, and then that facility would remain. Currently, right now, you have all these FAA, uh, antenna within the current terminal. And those, if we can somehow house those as they stand, that would be, that would be great. Uh, otherwise, those are significant costs to remove at the cost of not the FAA whose antennas they are, but of the sponsor.
Where are they? Can you show on the map?
Yeah. They're actually within the terminal building. I think it's a, it's a RCO, stand for anyway. They're, they're just right in this end right here. So potentially, you know, we could look at trying to salvage that wing, building off of that and, and then demoing what it was unneeded prior. Um, uh, Mayor, we've not gotten into the alternatives. Uh, again, this is more kind of site layout and, and programming. Uh, we just wanted to, we wouldn't have even brought this up, uh, in the alternatives unless we, uh, if there wasn't such a discrepancy in dollars and, and the EA overall, um, which is the only reason why we're bringing this up right now.
So this is a, a pretty fast, um, track to get this all wrapped up. Basically two weeks, and we don't have another council meeting scheduled, uh, before the application is due to be turned in. So, um, what do you anticipate for completing it and, and what kind of turnaround?
So, uh, the airport board today had actually asked and directed, uh, uh, us to, to kind of finalize that, that number, that ask for each alternative and provide that to the airport board, uh, where we would have a, um, a conference call to discuss next week, Tuesday. Um, and, and then potentially then at, at that point, you know, they would be able to review it, uh, allow, uh, or provide recommendations to the council. But ultimately, uh, what we would be looking for is, is, uh, um, uh, who is the, would we want, we would probably want the mayor to sign the application actually as well.
Right, I'm authorized to sign the, the packet. And I would wanna hear from the airport board what their recommendation is. And if they meet, that would be good. And I don't know how the council feels about, um, sending it in one way or the other without another discussion. But the council could all be present at the, you know, or participating in the conference call where that decision is made. And, I mean, we, we publicize those meetings anyway, so they're, they're public meetings, but they can't act.
Right, right. Nope, only providing recommendation. Yep, I, I understand, and, uh, I think, you know, what we wanna do is just to get that number, um, solidified. And, and what, um, you know, if any additional, uh, issues arise with site option two versus, uh, site option one, then we would wanna know that. Councilman.
Councilman Roby.
The two FAA people you talked about that both said, hey, if Watertown came first to mind, what role do they play between now when we make a decision? In other words, will they make a recommendation?
I think it helps to have your program managers get behind you. Um, uh, right now, we have brought them in on this entire process. So we've had a couple of different, probably had three different, um, phone conference calls with, uh, Brian Chuck from, um, the FAA in Bismarck and, uh, a call with, um, uh, the state. And, and then we also included, um, Sandy DePotti, who is, uh, running forecasting out of the Minneapolis ADO as well. So, uh, we, we've gotten a lot of people, at least a lot of eyes on this. They know what we're, what we're doing and, and they're behind it as a whole. I mean, uh, basically the, the inventory of the existing facility is just not up to speed. Um, and, and everyone recognizes that from each ADO. Um, the other part of this, uh, is kind of playing the, the, the politics behind it as well. And so, um, what Todd has asked, uh, and what Todd will be doing actually is, is potentially asking the mayor to reach out to, uh, some of our elected officials in Washington and provide the backing of, of any state as well.
Councilman.
Mitchell, as we look at, if I look at these two things, you've got, uh, you got the environmental assessment, not knowing what the outcome of that's gonna be. You got the higher cost, and you also then ultimately have the timing of all of that, right? Compared to the current location. Do those three items or any one of them, in any way you wanna look at it, adversely affect our probability of getting funding? So in other words, if we've got a ninety, you know, I'm gonna, obviously to crystal ball that you don't have.
Right.
But do we have a ninety percent probability if we go current site and a sixty percent probability? I don't, I'm just throwing those numbers out because to me, if I'm trying to make a decision, that probability is a huge issue for me.
Well, I, I think the, the probability for site option two, I don't think is, is anything. I think the probability of getting a supplemental grant for site option two is probably zero because of the EA. Because of the two years that that will likely take to complete that EA would forfeit our application for supplemental funds. And the question is, if we, if, it's one of those things where we could then ask for supplemental dollars at the lower amount in that site location, in our site option one location, and then we, we as a community would, would live with that terminal funded by a supplemental grant in that current location, which is not a bad location by any means. It just has some drawbacks to it. Now, if we were to not get the supplemental grant at that ask, then that opens up site option two. You know, we could come to the, uh, come to the city council and ask for, um, you know, ask you guys to seek an environmental assessment in that area. And then when it comes down to, on, on the CIP, that terminal project is listed as twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, then you would have your EA done for that, for that site option B. And, and you again, as the city council in twenty twenty, probably in that late twenty twenty timeframe, would then look at what option works best at that time.
The long, I'm sorry, what about the funding? If we miss out on the supplemental funding initially, cause that's a hundred percent, correct?
Yeah.
Would then it, would the, the future funding, uh, formula or, or the, the planning for that, is that at the ninety, ninety-five, five scenario? Or is, does the city then have a much larger number that?
That is something where, uh, you would, you would need to seek discretionary dollars from the FAA at that time. Um, and that is never, that's never a guarantee. But if you go, if in two years, you are now asking for twenty, twenty million dollars, just as a round number, your entitlements that come at that ten thousand, um, passenger threshold, you can bank up to three years of that. So your entitlement dollars given to you by the FAA would cover three million dollars of that. Now, what we would put in would be, the FAA would probably come, cover a lot of the site civil work there then. It's a hundred percent eligible, uh, or, or sorry, ninety percent eligible, um, for that. Uh, I think the additional share of the terminal building would, um, would then potentially be borne by, um, federal discretionary or local or state.
So, huh.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just trying to look at it, cause this is on a pretty fast track from the, but as far as the application is concerned. But the, if we were to get the supplemental funding.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And you described how that would go. Let's just say we got that. Doesn't matter which one it is. But then we have our performance dollars that we get, the one million dollars, what do you wanna call them, board or, or employment numbers that we can bank. Um, what's the restrictions on how those dollars can be used? Because if we have to make changes, which are the infrastructures or, or redo the road that goes in there, you know, maybe it's not a new one, but it, maybe it's, it's just redoing it. It's a four-lane with a nice median or something, right?
Absolutely.
Can those things be used for that to, to then offset the city's out-of-pocket dollars?
So your current, current enplanements are at one million dollars. You just got it last year. Uh, and so you have nothing banked. Um, but regardless of that, um, in the supplemental, they will take your entitlement dollars for, you know, that year, uh, anyway. So, so you would, you would have to use, you would have to use, as a part of that grant, use up your, your entitlements. We, I completely agree with where you're going.
Well, they're free, aren't they?
I know.
They give it to you and they take it away.
I know.
But you're saying that there's a zero percent chance that we'd get that site two.
I think.
Because of the environmental assessment, that they, we wouldn't even go for it for the application if we decide that that's what we wanna do. So we need to decide.
Well, if you ma- if you make the determination that that is really where you wanna go, then.
We'll focus elsewhere.
Then I guess we don't seek, uh, supplemental dollars at the October thirty-first deadline for the terminal project. Because I think what then you'd be doing is you'd be starting down the process of an EA at that site location. And then, uh, and then we would complete our concept budget report with alternatives, with the, uh, the civil layout of what we would be seeing. Uh, and then, uh, you know, within two years, you'd be banking entitlements. We would be talking to the FAA about discretionary, uh, at that point in time.
So what, which questions remain unanswered to make that decision? Um, is, this maybe is an airport board question that, I mean, how would, y- you're not clear. What would you need to see, Shan, to convince you that we should go for site two?
I guess I just want, I think the airport board wants some time. You know, we sent them out due diligence. Let's get us a, an, an A or B option. Let's not just accept A because it simply is. It was only after the board that they found this environmental assessment requirement. I, I mean, it changes everything.
I mean, it changes everything, as far as I can tell. So what we've asked them is, on Monday, to get us, you know, like you said, the pros and cons to both. I think that that equation may have significantly changed, or as we've heard right here, I guess I would like them to spend a couple of days to confirm this EA thing, because we'd asked them to give us options before, and they didn't have them at the 2:00 meeting, and all of a sudden at 4:00, all of a sudden, we find that we have, you know, this huge requirement that we didn't know existed before that almost makes it a clear answer. But I think a little calm to let them go do a little more research, come back to us on Monday, get us some read aheads, and then we're meeting Tuesday at 12:00. If everything exists as it is right now, I guess I can't make a recommendation, because I don't have my board here, but, yeah, I think maybe we're all seeing that it's fairly obvious, but like I said, it was kind of a last-minute in-between meetings here, all of a sudden, we find this.
Well, the, I don't think it's obvious necessarily. I mean, if truly Site Two is a better site, it's got to have some pretty.
And that's what we were pushing for. I know, like, security concerns, and after 9/11 and TSA, things are, when you put general aviation that close to commercial, some places are having, cities are having to hire security guards to come and meet private pilots at their plane and escort them into the FBO, because they're just too close. Now, like you said, now we have all these options, maybe we just move the FBO. I don't, we've got way too many things jammed in too close, and that's why we were thinking this is the time, and it really isn't that much further from the industrial park, right? I mean, it was just right around the corner.
No, it's essentially the same route. In fact, I can't even picture the DOT allowing a second roadway access. We'd probably have to just do something on our Airport Improvement Plan to put a road through our airport.
Right.
Off of the same.
Outlet or cut. So, yeah, you know, and you drive those roads, I mean, there is a lot going on there. I know I drive out there all the time, and it feels like a one-lane or one-way road, but it's not. And I've met people head-on in my lane. I, there's a lot going on, and if we're looking at possibly doubling passengers in the next 10, 20 years, it's not going to get better. Now, there's many ways to cut this thing, and it's a fast track, so we're trying to go through this cost-benefit analysis and make a good recommendation from the Airport Board as quickly as we can. I don't think I can make any recommendation right now. I'd like to see all of that Monday, and then have a good discussion Tuesday, and certainly invite all of you to come and tend and.
And that gives them a couple of days to finish the application.
That'll be fine.
So part of that is moving along, not contingent upon the site, right? Or is it all contingent on the site location?
The application would be contingent upon the site selection, yes, because Site Selection Two would be, would be a significantly greater ask of the feds for money.
We wouldn't be asking, though, so, I mean, if you're.
Oh, true. Great point.
If we're picking Site Two, we're kind of realizing we're not asking anymore.
I think that's, I think that's accurate, and then it would just be a matter of if, well, you know, there's, the supplemental grant is out, I think, another year as well, so, I mean, you could, you could look at another, another run at it next year, but I know that the push has been to try to get, try to divvy this out quickly, and I think there are a lot of airports that are seeking, seeking dollars.
Well, if we decided that we wanted to pursue Site Two, we would want to immediately begin the process of the environmental assessment.
That's correct.
So we can get those public hearings and letters sent out and waiting periods and all that started.
Yep.
And we don't have any money in the budget for that, but that's probably not a giant amount of money.
Right.
But 100?
I'd say at least.
Yeah, so again, another.
We'd scope it and.
Decision.
And really detail what the, what the process is and what we're looking at.
Okay, so you're going to be very busy the next few days. Monday, a briefing, and Tuesday, a meeting, so.
So we're sending all the information over to, over to the airport, and Todd will distribute it to the Airport Board on Monday, and then I'll kind of soak it in and have a meeting on Tuesday at noon.
Okay, is that a conference call or?
At this point, yes, that's what.
Tuesday?
What I was anticipating would be a conference call. If I, if you'd like me here, I can, I can make the trip as well.
We'll publicize that meeting. I would think the council would want to be there. If we had to, I suppose, we could schedule a special meeting before the 31st, if they really needed to act.
Will be officially notified of that meeting, like, for, like, an email to us, then? Can we be?
Well, I'm trying to remember. I'm, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can, I've already sent it to Todd, so Todd can, Todd can send that over to.
Todd, is that all right?
All right.
Yeah, okay. Other questions? Well, this is a lot to think about.
Plenty to, plenty to chew on. I know that it's big. You know, this was a very quick, quick process from the get-go.
Right.
I mean, I think your request for proposals was in August of this year, so we've been gathering data and coming up with, you know, with what we see as a reasonable and justifiable request for supplemental dollars for the terminal. You know, as it pertains to a second site, you know, that's a, that throws a whole, a whole different scenario into it, so. But we will put together those numbers and look forward to getting anyone who can make it at that meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there any other old business? We did have a little, I don't know if this is old business, with our City Hall being in the budget, was rather stinky today with our little hydrogen sulfide gas problem we've been dealing with, so I don't know if that's neither here nor there, but.
Mayor, just comment on that. I know, because I get asked about City Hall a lot, and we've kind of pushed that off, if you will, it's not an immediate need, and we've all agreed upon that, but that's happened a number of times, and it's not a very good working environment when that happens. So I would just comment to your comment that, you know, the City Hall is not tomorrow, but it's, it's coming. It's coming. I just think the public needs to be aware of that. It's not tomorrow, but it's probably coming.
Yep. It's kind of cold with windows all open. Any other old business or new business? See none, any liaison member reports? Okay, we do have a need to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 for personnel negotiations, so I'll look for a motion second to go into executive session. Moved by Vilhar, second by Roby. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We're in executive session.